I got seven o'clock, so now we're gonna get started. Welcome, everybody, to the December fourteenth meeting of the Concord zoning board of appeals. All virtual tonight. We'll start with a roll call for the CBA members that are here. Thomas Swaim.
Yes.
Elizabeth Akerhurst Moore.
Yep.
Elizabeth Dwyer Leonard.
Yes.
And I'm not seeing Ravi, so he is not here at the moment, I guess. Chair Theo Kinnaman is here as well. Everybody that's that's virtual, please, indeed, please take your please mute yourself and just for bandwidth purposes, please no video so that that everybody has a better connection and then as as you're obviously as your item is up, then please unmute yourself and turn on your video. The first item of tonight, seven o'clock, Timothy Gray for a special permit on the zoning bylaw sections four two 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 six two thirteen and eleven six or five hundred thirteen square foot additional dwelling unit above a proposed five hundred seventy six square foot garage, which altogether exceeds the maximum floor area ratio by seven hundred and fifty three square feet at two fifty two Commonwealth Avenue. Now, is the I know there was a request from the representative to move this meeting to later this evening. I see Timothy Dre is is here, but this is representative here. Not seeing that, then I would like a motion to move this meeting to seven.
So as because you've opened the public hearing, you don't need a motion to move it. You can just table the discussion till later as chair.
Okay, then I will table that discussion till seven thirty one in that time slot, so that would be a little bit later. And we'll we'll pick it up then. So it's seven oh three, so we have a few minutes. And we can, speaking of minutes, approve some minutes, so Elizabeth, I would assume you got some comments from 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 us, from other members as well. I know I I read them and I had comments on one of them and the other ones I was fine with. So anybody had any edits, comments, additions to the minutes?
No.
I didn't. I did not. I read them. I did not.
Okay, then can we do we need to approve them separately or can we do that as a whole?
No, I just so the
My comments were really benign, but you know, and only on the second.
Yeah, the only edit you had was to reference.
Beals and Thomas.
Dan Feeney was with Beals and Thomas and then Dan Holmes is their attorney. So I will I will put in their affiliate as far as their
Yep.
Their affiliation.
Okay.
And to delete at the end, the applicant showed the board the location of a proposed trail down to the river. And they were deleted with a canoe rack. And the meeting didn't start till probably like like eight twenty.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it went to it went to.
It should be. I mean, it just it seemed it seemed like a long time, but you know, time flies when you have fun, so I was.
Anybody? So I know it was nine thirty, correct? And I thought it was like more like nine forty five by the time we all got out of there.
Sorry me.
Anybody have a better recollection from me?
Just leave it as it leave it as it is, Ben.
Yeah, so with those edits, the the motion would be to approve the others as written and the minutes for October thirty first as amended.
So moved.
What were the dates?
One second.
I'm hoping you aren't gonna say that because I don't have them in front of me.
Second.
Look, we already got a second.
There's Rob. Robbie is not here.
August, September fourteenth.
August twentieth, September fourteenth.
August tenth.
August tenth, obviously.
September fourteenth as written.
Fourteenth as written and October thirty first. Thirty first, right. It was Halloween that I remember. Thirty first as amended. I moved that we approved those minutes.
I second.
Oh, there's a favor. There's Elizabeth Akerhurst Moore.
Hi.
Ms. Elizabeth Dwyer Leonard.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. So having that on the way, our seven oh five hearing on one sixty six Commonwealth Avenue, Howard Talbeck, for special permit, the type plan review has requested a continuance to February fourth, I believe I saw. Is that correct?
February eighth.
Oh.
February eight.
February eight. Look at that, February eight. Now, I'm I've been struggling with this and I want to just, I don't think the board here can take any action per se, but I do want to get it out and want to get it out on record that, you know, this application was filed, I believe, in May of last year. And we have nothing but continuances. If you look at the amount of drawings, memos, letters that that's on on file for us, it is it is a bit hard to start comprehending, you know, what's what, what's current and what is not current. So I think that we have to, if this applicant finally shows up on February fourth, sorry, eight, oh, eight, then we need to have one comprehensive package of what's current and ignore all the original filings because it's it doesn't serve us any good to have a history. We just need one comprehensive set on what is being proposed and that that we can go forward on. So that that would be, you know, would be a good scenario. Another good scenario is that the applicant would withdraw it or prejudice and then file a new application with the good materials. But, you know, that that is, that ball is in the applicant's court and we can't we can't make him or her do that. So anyway, I I and I know when this final first came up, Thomas, you had you know, was with a another filing we had that kept on continuing and continuing and you you made a comment at that point in time that, you know, at what point do we say enough is enough, just stop it and and file a new permit application? And yeah.
Are you addressing that to me, Mr. Chairman?
Well, no, this was this was a discussion to the board. I don't know who you are, so.
I'm sorry. I thought, Thomas, I thought you were referring to me.
No, no, no.
Mr. Falwell, don't try to steal my thunder. He was talking to me.
Well, then, all well and good, and I always a pleasure to see you, Tom.
So Theo, Mr. Falwell is counsel for the applicant.
Oh, that's good. Thank you for being here. So my suggestion, what do you think about it, to withdraw without prejudice?
That that really doesn't make much sense, Mr. Chair, in our view. I mean, the 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 current scenario, the current proposal has changed and it really this matters as it's as it's proposed and is moving forward as been before was filed in September because we had gone the original filing for a number of reasons, principally because of the proposed restaurant not getting support, shall we say, and making it unlikely that it was going to proceed. We've gone back, we went back to the drawing boards and filed a whole new set with a different a different a different proposal in September. So the proposal that you will see has really been only around since since September. I don't know if you saw my letter that I filed requesting the continuance. I go ahead and been posted as of this afternoon on their website, but I filed a letter yesterday which detailed eight and nine, ten reasons why this should be continued because we're we're really in a situation now where we're responding to peer reviews. And as I indicated in my letter, the last peer review that we've got with respect to the stormwater, we only got early this month. And then last week, there was another submission or a by the Concomitant Light Plan Engineer, which again requires us to go go through a significant review of their things and and respond. So we're in the process of responding to two peer reviews, traffic and then traffic and parking, which is almost complete. And then this stormwater, which has, I think it was twenty twenty-three different points that we only got December first. So we're acting diligently with respect to the proposal. We just have to we just have to go through all of the comments from the peer reviews. As I said, the traffic, the traffic report had thirty-eight separate items. The stormwater had twenty-three separate items. So we're working as fast as we can to get those peer review responses in so that we can get before the planning board, hopefully in January. So when we come before you in 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 February, we'll we will have a complete package to show you and proceed accordingly. So the delay is in large part a change in the project that came about in September and then the the peer reviews that have held us up in terms of being able to to respond to the mess we must in order to to go to the planning board.
Okay, okay. I I I understand that, but it's it's it would be nice for for this board to have a clean package so that we we know what what we will be voting on and that we don't have, you know, a whole big file of of documentation. So hopefully we can, you can make that clear to us that there is there what we'll be making our decision on and then and then we'll take it from there.
I mean, the some of the original documentation and filings that are still on the on the website are no longer applicable or are different projects. So there's no reason, I don't know what the procedure is from the planning department standpoint, but I mean, those could be taken off because they're not really relevant anymore.
Yeah, but I don't think that's a decision that the planning board, the planning department wants to make, which which documents are relevant or not. I think that's that's a new.
Well, that's fine. I mean, it's a different, it's a whole different set that the September set, the September filings, anything that precedes the September filings is not the project that's currently being proposed. Everything that was that's been proposed and filed since the September September filing is the current materials, including the.
Okay, and and I assume that once you respond to peer reviews, there there'll be some, there'll be some updated drawings.
Yes, we're in the process of doing doing those even now.
Good, good. Thank you for the explanation. Thank you for being here. So I will take a motion to move this item to our February eighth meeting, and I would like to do this at seven oh five. Can we have a motion?
Remove move to continue the application of Howard Silver for a special permit.
So it's a Ravi you weren't called just yet on on the roll call, but just for for the roll call, Ravi Fia.
I am present.
Thank you.
All right.
And please continue with your motion.
Okay. Motion to continue the application of Howard Silver for a special permit. This type plan review on the zoning bylaw sections four two three seven two seven seven two twelve nine six and eleven eight for combined business residence use in the Floodplain District and really from parking for thirty-one spaces, one sixty-six Commonwealth Avenue to February eighth twenty twenty-four at oh five P M.
Second.
And all those in favor, Ms. Fia.
Aye.
Aye.
Miss Akerhurst Moore.
Aye. Aye. Question, does point of order for Elizabeth since there are now?
It's right. Chair votes aye as well.
Oh, great. Sorry. Three. Well, this is about voting. So there are three full members here. I assume it's you, Robbie, who are voting.
Correct.
Just Elizabeth.
Yeah, yeah.
And then. Not that I don't appreciate your vote, but.
Okay.
So thank you. Let's move on to our seven oh, seven ten meeting. Linda Graham for the renewal of a special permit on the zoning by law sections five three six two and eleven six for a special home occupation for music lessons at one forty-one Mildred Circle. Anybody here for the applicant?
Yes, hello.
Hi.
Linda Graham is here.
Good.
And you're here.
Thank you. Yeah, I can. We can hear you. So you've you've had this this permit since November nineteen nineteen ninety-five. You had a two year, you got it for two years and after that for four times for a five-year extension. So you're here for a next for your next extension.
Mm hmm. Yes.
I'm looking Paul Creedon, building inspector. Hi, Paul. Have we had any comments? Is there any?
No, 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 we've heard no comments, no, no complaints, rightly.
No, no complaints. Okay, I will open this this up for comments from the public. Anybody from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, closing that part of the part of our hearing.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Just to the applicant, is there still no parking on the site and no employees?
Yes, that's right.
Parking on the site.
Parking, there's parking on on the site, yes. Everything is the same, has been the same for a number of years. Yeah.
And I would say to the chair, if there is a motion for approval, you probably should note the terms of the prior permit, which would have been issued in twenty eighteen for the five-year period.
Yep, yep. Anybody else having any comments or any discussions? And I want to throw this out there. I think our typical extension, longest extension we do is five years. Is there an appetite in this case to make do this for a longer period? And I want to see what the board's appetite is for that.
I have no objection to extending it longer. Have we done ten years before?
I I have not, but.
We have. Maybe I'm wrong, Elizabeth.
I I seem to recall one, but it it is definitely not often.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Personally, I have no objection, but open to whatever the rest of the board says.
Yeah, I mean, given that we've extended this four times now for five years and on a two-year original permit, twenty-two years, twenty-two years, there's no no comments, no complaints. I think the the application is pretty pretty well described in in what's what's proposed, you know, the the timeframes and each day are set, no employees. It's it's pretty clear. So I'm I'm open to to extend this to a longer time periods for, say, ten years.
I'm fine with that, too.
If that's the case, then can I have a motion, please? Elizabeth, you you did the other.
Motion to approve the application of Linda for the renewal of a special permit under zoning by law sections five three six two and eleven six for a special home occupation for music lessons at one forty-one Mildred Circle with a ten-year extension and otherwise the same terms and conditions as the previous twenty eighteen special permit.
And I second that.
All those in favor, Ms. Fia.
Aye.
Miss Akerhurst Moore.
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. Congratulations. See you in ten years.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
He's someone in ten years.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. My next prayer is my dear, my agenda. Moving on, seven fifteen, Benty Elliott for the renewal of a special permit on the zoning by law sections five three six two, five three seven, five three eleven, five four five and eleven point six for special home occupation to offer small group cooking classes that may include the sale of farm products associated with Saltbox Farm and temporary accessory used to hold outdoor events and dinners from April to October at Saltbox Farm at four forty fifty-four Westford Road and one fifty-five A Lower Road. Anybody here from the applicants to present?
Hello, Ben Elliott here. How are you?
Good, thanks. How are you? Please go ahead and please go ahead.
Well, I would love to request a renewal of the application and per the suggestion of the town, there are two two permits that are being merged just to make life easier for everybody, I think, moving forward. So if of the course, the past, I guess, ten years now, we've been, we've been doing this. A little bit of a pause during COVID for obvious reasons, but would love to be able to continue to host events at the farm, sell product produced on the farm and host cooking classes and cooking demonstrations and dinners here at the farm as well. And merge merge the the two current permits into one, just to make life a little easier. I haven't had a, I haven't, over the number of years that we've been doing it, I, to my knowledge, there haven't been any issues and complaints from the town or from neighbors. Every time we host an event, I always reach out to the police myself just to let them know that some such and such is happening. And so I'm hoping we might renew renew this, merge the two permits and move forward.
Good, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have, I have one. One of the sites in the application is five point three point eleven. And I would suggest that classes, that section to me says, classes are not allowed in a private home in a residential district. So I would suggest that at least the the board has to then struggle, if I'm correct on that, if I read that correctly, then doesn't the board have to struggle with five point three point six point two? As excuse, yeah, six point two, as it relates to classes. I don't have any problem with the other items he's asking for. But I do have, I think the board needs to be clear about the application of classes.
Is that a question for me or for the board?
No, for the board.
Say, what's what's the section that you had an issue with?
Five point three, five point three point eleven. Talks about workshop and classes, and that's one of the sections that were cited in the application. And as I read it, you can have those, you can have classes and workshops, as it reads, in any other district if conducted within a hospital, motel, hotel, extended stay hotel, nursing home, school, or philanthropic or religious institution. So at least to the extent that this application for classes, I don't believe classes could be authorized at this facility under five three eleven, which would then take you back because it is cited in the application, five point three point six point two, special home occupation. And then I think you have to struggle with sub C of that section because that's about off-street parking, et cetera.
So and we are in a residential district.
That's correct. This, yes, this is a residential district.
Well, Tom, if we're if we're looking at five point three point sixteen point two in terms of parking, can we
Yes.
lean on the fact that for the past ten years, this has been in keeping with the residential character and given by the fact that there have been no complaints?
Absolutely. If that, if you come down to that, I just, but I think you need to focus on that for a minute because I think I read for some of those, it's quite a large number of cars. Now, granted, with no objections at this point, police are aware of it, neighbors are aware of it, absolutely. So I would think your inclination is certainly acceptable, but I think the board ought to be pretty clear about that.
Well, I mean, I I would just say that we I've mapped out the parking for the classes that we do host. The parking has been mapped out in our driveway. The nature of the classes and demonstrations and dinners within within the home, special home occupation permit are by nature on a small scale. So we can't really host more than, you know, twelve or fifteen people at a time, which for the most part would suggest that there aren't going to be more than, you know, six to eight cars at any one time for a class, which our driveway more than accommodates. So during the classes, the 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 issue of having cars parked along the street from a safety standpoint is isn't really an issue and hasn't been for the past ten years. Because the the nature of the classes are on a smaller scale.
Would you be comfortable? Would you? Would you be comfortable? And I'm not suggesting the board has to adopt this, but would you be comfortable comfortable with a cap on the numbers of people, for example, fifteen for a class?
Where at a at a class or gathering?
Well, I'm just, I'm separating out, I guess, I would assume that some of your gatherings are bigger than the class.
Well, I think I think this is where the the two permits come into play. I mean, I think for the classes or the the demonstrations that we do, we can't really host more than, let's say, twenty people at at its largest. We we just can't. There's not room and it wouldn't be comfortable for our guests, so we so we don't.
So so Tom, I think I might have solved this because if you look at the lead into
Because if you look at the lead into um section five of zoning by law, it's, it has, you know, the table of the uses, right? And it said, uh, a use listed in table two is permitted uh if uh, by special permit, if it's so marked in the table. So if you look at five three eleven in table two, uh, of of the accessory uses section of the bylaw.
Uh, yeah, got it.
In residential districts, you may have this used by special permit. So I think we as a board.
Oh, I agree with that. I agree with that.
So I think we can grant a special permit to have the use in a residential district and stay under five eleven.
Oh, I, you see, I would disagree with that.
You disagree?
Like, because I think the table is consistent with five three eleven. Uh, there are certain conditions under five three eleven in which you could grant the special permit. But even then, it's only under uh, certain conditions and certain, and certain buildings. And if you're comfortable, if you're comfortable, as Elizabeth, I think was comfortable, that the five three six two could cover it, then you don't have to get bogged down in the five three eleven.
I'm, I agree with you, Tom, in your reading of the table of uses, and I also agree with what you just said that I said, which is that I am comfortable with it under five point three point six point two. Um, I think that if Ben were like, I'm going to open a culinary institute in my house, that might be um a different situation, but I, I think the word class maybe, it it doesn't worry me here, small scale. You know?
Demo- demonstration.
Demonstration in conjunction with an event. I mean, it doesn't bug me. I don't, I don't, I think after ten years, I don't need any further reassurance that it's it's work, working pretty well. But I do think, Tom, that we should fall, find that under five point three point six point two.
Uh, yep, yep. Okay, um, while we're at it, um, yeah, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, then I will close that uh section of the hearing. Uh, Paul Creedon, um, just a neat, as always, just double checking with you.
Yeah, no, no, we've had no.
You're a bit foggy there on the camera.
So. Yeah, uh, no, no, we've, we've had no complaints or or any issues with with this uh, event. Events.
Not classes. Um, thanks, Paul. Um. Bringing it back to the board, um, where, uh, what's the fancy of the board? Where, uh, do we want to go with this? Um, any further discussion? Um, any uh, any motions? It's up to you all.
Sorry, just remind me, what are the, what were the time, um, the terms for the original special permits? Were they two years? Were they?
Um, are, are you asking?
I, I, anyone, I just don't have in front of me. With the five years?
Yeah.
Oh, all of them are five. They were just at different times.
They were just at slightly different times, and the town suggested that we merge them to just, as I say,
Yeah.
Make things easier for everybody.
Um, I, unless there's more discussion, I'm happy to make a motion, and I'm com- I think it makes a lot of sense to merge them into one special permit. Um. So.
I agree with you.
Okay, great. Um, I will go ahead and move that we um, approve or we grant a special permit to Ben Elliott. Um, it's really like a new permit, right? Not a renewal, since we're mushing them together, maybe? I don't know.
I, 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 I would make this a new permit.
New permit, um, although it's going to be on the same conditions as the old existing permits, but um, under zoning by law sections five point three point six point two, five point three point seven, five point three.
Nope. So five point three point seven, are you not?
Sorry, are we not making any? It's five point three point eleven, we weren't.
Correct. Okay. Right.
So. So would. Eleven. Five point three point seven, not five point three point eleven. Um, five point four point five and eleven point six for a special home, home occupation, offers small group cooking classes that may include the sale of farm products associated with Salt Box Farm, and for the temporary accessory used to hold outdoor events and dinners from April to October at Salt Box Farm, forty dash fifty four Westford Road and one fifty five A Lowell Road, parcels number one fif- one five four nine fifteen fifty dash one and fifteen fifty dash two for a period of five years and subject to the conditions in the currently existing two special permits. Is that good enough?
Are you asking?
Your second.
They're not asking you, but sorry, I was asking Elizabeth really, and then I was, yeah.
And I'm waiting for Ravi.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I mean, I, I, I'm fine with five three eleven the way I'm reading it, but if the board, whether the rest of the board does not feel that it's necessary or that easy, then I, uh, I will second.
Thank you. All these, all those in favor, Ms. Akeris Moore.
Hi.
Ms. Sophia.
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And.
Appreciate it.
Um, bye.
Thanks, guys. Take care.
Hmm. Hmm. Moving, moving right along, uh, at seven twenty Freedom Development Corporation for a special permit on the zoning by law sections four two two one and eleven six to demolish the existing dwelling and construct a new two unit dwelling at eight ninety five Main Street. Um, anybody here to uh, representing the applicant?
Yes, that's, um, I'm Laura Vio from Freedom Development and my husband David.
Hello.
Hi, how are you? Um. Please go ahead and uh, present your uh your request.
Okay, um, eight ninety five Main Street is the last lot on Main Street, abutting Route Two and some state owned land. Just so everyone's familiar with where it is, we're proposing to build a townhouse style two family residence. The existing home to be raised is approximately twenty one hundred square feet on one acre of land. The proposed two family will consist of two twenty eight hundred square foot units designed for generational living. The layout for each unit includes a first floor primary bedroom with a bath in addition to a second floor primary bedroom to enable older parents to live with their children and grandchildren. The growth of multi-generational living has increased with millennials, as reported in the Wall Street Journal, and we've seen it in the real estate that we develop and sell. So, and that's because of increasing housing costs and also the need to have some in-home affordable childcare. So that the units have been designed to accommodate those multi-generational families. The overall size of the new structure will be less than fifty percent of the allowable floor ratio for this site. And the um proposed plan meets all dimensional regulations. And this proposal is in line with the twenty eighteen envisioned Concord Comprehensive Long Range Planning Housing Goal in terms of number five, and also, um, it's restated in the draft zoning by law amendment that was just done in November for the upcoming town meeting to be consistent with the need to add more units to the town of Concord. And more specifically, this proposal adds two moderately sized units to Concord's housing stock rather than one large home. It provides flexibility for extended families due to the first floor bedroom space, which will allow aging residents to remain in Concord. All things that, um, I think the envisioned tw- two thousand eighteen is working towards. And the location also implements the Smart Growth Strategy due to its adjacency to Route Two and close proximity to West Concord Center. The scale and design of this proposed project um, goes along with the neighborhood, and we believe poses no negative impact to the area. And we are open for questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, questions from uh, my fellow board members?
Yes.
Good.
You're gonna cut me off one of these days.
No, 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 I, I'm looking, I mean. Go ahead.
Uh, could you bring up the copy of the plan? Because I have a concern about the parking location. Because I thought the neighbor wrote a very uh, interesting letter that's in the file, I've read it. And if that neighbor's letter is correct, then a large number of trees are going to be uh, destroyed right on the front of that property that's on that corner. I happen to live out in that area, so I know that corner very well. And if there's a way to move parking a little bit, so it's not to take all those trees down, I think that would be a benefit
I, I agree, Thomas, and we, um, actually, my husband David didn't meet with Cecilia.
No, I had a telephone conversation with her yesterday. She had left me a message.
About that.
We spoke yesterday for about twenty minutes, and earlier she was on this Zoom call. And I don't see her name anymore. And I assured her that we were not taking any of those trees down there. She was concerned with um having to view the traffic signal at that. But we, we've moved the driveway around so that we don't have to do that.
But you don't, but this just happened yesterday, so of course, there's not a revised plan yet from Stamsky and McNary, but um, we have talked to them about moving that parking. So that it's closer in towards the center of the site and away from taking any trees down, because the, the only trees that exist on that site really are right around the perimeter, the whole.
Correct, I agree. Yes, I agree with that.
No trees, so.
So the, the plan.
We want to leave the trees.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, well, the plan that uh, the butter submitted the letter and submitted a plan in which she, I believe she had outlined in green the trees that were of concern, and if I understand what you're saying, those now remain. They do not come down.
That is true.
Okay.
And we've been out there on two occasions with Will Holden.
He's here from the group.
And we're not touching any of those. And it's to our benefit to keep as many trees as possible. We'll actually be adding trees to increase the buffer from the view and the noise from Route Two and Route sixty two.
Okay, thank you.
Um, anybody else from the board? If not, then I'll, I'll jump in here and I'll actually piggyback on uh, on Tom's comments here. I uh I visited the site and looked at it from uh, from the street yesterday, and and then the concern, uh, have the same concerns the neighbor had, and Tom just mentioned. Um, the site plan is pretty uh elementary, um. And it doesn't, it doesn't show much, and I would like to indeed be a little bit, um have a little bit more information on, um, noted on the site plan, you know, where are the trees, have a survey done, show them on the plan, show how that that driveway is gonna, gonna go. Um, um, so that, that you know, I think, I think we might want to think about that one uh, a little bit longer. Um, I've got some other comments and stuff that I uh, I I will save for the discussion, but I, at this point in time, I think I want to open it to uh members of the public, see whether there's anybody here that that would like to speak.
Yeah, I'll, uh, there. Uh, Dan and Kate Conlon, twenty five Orchard Road. Um, so as a butters to the property, we oppose the plan for a couple of reasons. Um, we just feel like the building plan is incongruous with the current neighborhood look. Uh, in the current plan, the structure is massive, and it's really not keeping um, in shape or form with the, the neighborhood homes. And so in our opinion, there's a negative impact on the character of the neighborhood. Um, the neighborhood, I should also point out, is primarily made of single family homes. And we're also concerned with the proposed size in relation to the existing structure. Uh, the proposed dwelling dwarfs the existing size of the house, so that's a concern of ours as well. Um, as well as the loss of privacy. Um, you know, I think it's a, a structure that basically spans uh, almost two and a half, um parcels of property versus the existing structure.
Hmm. We're also concerned with the forest back, it's not starting at the this, the point of the existing structure now and moving back, which I believe is in one of the bylaws. Um, and again, we, we weren't able to write a letter because of the timing, but we would like to have a lot, some more time as well to kind of look at the planning. Uh, we're definitely concerned about the trees. Uh, I know maybe the trees around the perimeter wouldn't be, need to be removed, but there are many trees that will need to be removed in order to build this enormous structure that include umbrella trees, which would impact noise pollution.
That's not true. Um, we met with Will Holden.
Excuse me, excuse me, let me, um if, if, you know, you can, you can have, I, I, I don't want to have people go directly here, everything comes back to uh, to the chair. Um, and then we can, you know, I can relay a question, and otherwise you will have, you will get your opportunity, but I don't want to go into a discussion now here at this point in time. I, I just want to hear all the comments from the public, and then, and then you'll, you'll, you'll get it, your chance to respond, but.
And at the very least, like more, more time to look at the plans, to look at, you know, we absolutely oppose this building. Um, but we haven't had, you know, adequate time to consult with others to also, you know, to look at it in more detail.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, there's somebody else who has his uh, his and her hand up, so go ahead.
Yeah, I, yes, sure, certainly, yeah. I uh, I'd say of, okay, Ed Goggan and Laurie Foster at forty one Orchard Road. And we're also butters. And I agree with uh, Dan and Kate's comments about um uh, objecting to the plan, and I had, just have some questions for very similar reasons, but I have a question um, regarding the uh, footprint of the house and um, trying to understand the reason why the footprint was moved so far back into the lot. Um, and versus starting where the existing footprint of the house is. Uh, and the um that certainly is, uh, I would imagine is going to impact the amount of trees uh, that have to come down uh, for that. And uh, just the, uh, it seems like the size, the horizontal size of the unit, six thousand square feet, I think uh, is certainly seems larger than the majority, if not all of the homes in this area. So it seems like it's going to stand out like a sore thumb.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Right, hang on, anybody else in the public wishing to speak? If uh, if there's nobody else, then um, I'll close the public comment section and.
I think Tony Carr would like to speak.
Tony, you're on mute.
Tony, you're on mute. I think we're, he's on mute, but I know he'd like to, to speak.
Let's uh, let's pause him for uh, for a moment while he figures out the, try again, Tony? Nope, still no good. So let's pause it for a moment and then give the applicant a, a chance to respond here.
Um, I think part of the disconnect for the scale and all of that with this lot is that this lot at one acre is um, over three times the size of the typical lot in the neighborhood. So based on residency zoning, the FAR that can be built on that site even for a single family home is eleven thousand square feet, which um, would meet zoning, could be built and could be set in there with dimensional um, and and fill and still accommodate all the dimensional regulations. So by putting in this structure, it's half the size of what the FAR is that's allowed there. It just so happens that the house that's there, that's been there since nineteen fifty, obviously, is very small for the site. And I think that um, in terms of what a builder is going to look at on that property, if it's not um, a smaller duplex, then it would have to be one of those large houses that is going to command in the two seven to three million dollar dollar range with a big carriage house, et cetera, et cetera. And I just don't think that that um, is a better option for the neighborhood.
I think as far as the trees go, I, I welcome you, uh, Mr. Goggan, I, I, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. Um, and the other couple, I can't find you here, but um, to call Will Holden, we've walked the site one hundred percent. There are no trees coming down except maybe the invasive trees that we can take down by right, and I told him we'll probably leave those there as well. The whole lot in the building area that we're suggesting is wide open. So the comments that Mr. Conley made is is just not true. We're not cutting down any umbrella trees. We're not cutting down any trees whatsoever. So don't take my word for it. All, Will Holden, walk the site with them. You're welcome to go out there. Your information is just wrong.
Thank, thank you. I, and. It it would be good, as I said earlier, to expand on your existing conditions plan and just do a survey of the trees and and add them on there. And then they can, anybody can see. And then it appeared yesterday, you know, in my quick drive by that indeed, there was a large, open central section. Uh, but, you know, just. Just let's, let's, uh, let's verify. Um, that, so. Um, let's see whether Mr. Carr is. Nope, still not, still not. Well, um.
I, I mean, I have other concerns besides the trees.
What's that?
Well, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Let's just, let's just keep this central.
Okay, my turn.
Elizabeth, it's, yeah, you can, you can talk anytime.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I just wanted to tell Mr. Carr that he can phone in. If you want to try and call in. The phone number. Uh, hang on. The phone number is. Eight, seven, seven. Eight, five, three. Five, two, five, seven. And I don't know, I've never called in, so I don't know if you need the meeting ID or the password. And then. I'd also like to suggest to the board that they may think about having a site visit.
Um, yeah, I think I think that that might be a good thing. Um, there's something, something else I also wanted to bring up. There, there was a, there was a letter that came in from the engineering department, also commenting on the. Submission that it was missing some information on the the engineering side. Um, and I, and they were. I got pretty much focused on water and sewer, but as far as utilities go. And I've mentioned this. In several other hearings now or applications that we need to start thinking about. Uh, stormwater as a utility, especially after the excellent presentation that Ellen Cuthard did a week or two ago. Um, about the utilities and the the stormwater utility program that's. By law, that's being voted on in town meeting, the upcoming town meeting. Uh, we need to make sure, I think, in all applications, that we take care of stormwater and and present a plan. To the, to this board that that deals with stormwater and the, and. Deal with sort of management of stormwater, I I think would mean, you know, detention and infiltration, and I think, you know, I'd be looking at the. Detaining. And. Or I I'd be looking at not increasing the flows of a hundred year storm, not volume and a rate of the site. So, um, I think. Stamsky and McNary, the the engineers will know what to do with that. And I I think it's especially important since this is a large house with a lot of pavement shown on that on that site plan. Um, and we need to, we need to detain and infiltrate that water. We can't just sheet flow it off and have the town take care of it. Um, that's, that's not because we'll be, you know, with the stormwater utility that's coming into a into effect. This coming year, we are all going to be paying for that, so we can't, we can't have that. So. That's some, some additional information that. We would like. I would like. So, anybody else from the board? No further comment, so.
He does. I gotta raise.
Tony, are you there?
I. I think you might be able to hear me now, is that correct?
I, I, we hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Appreciate the patience there as we got that sorted. So, yeah, my name's Tony Carr. I live next door. Uh, nine oh five Main Street. It was my wife who submitted the letter around the tree, so we appreciate the the response on that. That was important to us. And we are excited about getting the site developed. But I do, I do want to just state my, our position as well, like we we are concerned about the size of the of the house, and I think. How it fits into the broader neighborhood, and I think. The conversation around the board, having a site visit and really taking a close look at the plans is important, and we look forward to just to continue dialogue here. Uh, but just wanted to mention, from our perspective, you know, we 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 understand the concerns that were expressed by our fellow neighbors here today and have have similar concerns ourselves.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Baze.
Yes, hi, thank you. Eric Baze, thirty three Orchard Road, again on a butter. Uh, I just wanted to, you know, agree with my fellow neighbors, a little bit of concern here, as far as the size of the unit, the way it fits in the neighborhood. Um, privacy concerns, I I believe it's a large building that will be taller than the fence line. So, I mean, I would assume there's windows in the back that they're going to be looking directly into our backyards. Um, you know, which is a concern of ours. Uh, I don't think the fence goes up that high. Um, and also, do we have a timeline on construction? I mean, there's going to be loud. Pounding and drilling and whatnot, or do we know how long that will will last if this does come to? Uh, you know, be approved.
There won't be any pounding, and there certainly won't be any drilling. Um, we dig a hole and put a foundation in. Um, it'd be six months probably. But it it, do you think there's ledge or something like that where there's going to be pounding or drilling?
No, I'm just talking about construction wise. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I know, it it. It should all come through me here, but but go ahead here.
I'm just talking about natural construction of a. A regular building that will take, I would say, a year's time, you know, a couple, year or two's time to build. Uh, that's. You know.
But, you know, it's, as as the applicant said, I mean, there's a foundation that needs to be dug, and unless there is ledge or big, big balls, you know, there there is no, you know. It'll be the the usual construction, and then, you know. After that, you know, once, you know, it's a stick-built building, so once, once it's up, it's enclosed, you know, then the majority of the work will be done. Interior, so. It's, it should be, you know, and plus the the town has pretty specific. Construction, uh, time, time periods, you know, when. Construction is allowed to start, et cetera, and then also some noise bylaws, so. I, I, I. I think about us on that, that point should be pretty well protected. I mean, because there is construction noise, right? There's bang, you can't bang a nail without. Without making noise, but it's, it's not, yeah, you, you should be well protected there. So, I'm bringing this back to the board now. So we've had several requests here, requests of a, I need better, just conditions plan that shows trees that are staying trees that potentially will be removed. Um, some engineering detail. And potentially a site visit.
I'm in favor of the site visit. I think it, I think it would be very helpful for all of us.
Good, yeah, I I think so too.
Can I say one more?
Sure.
I'm just worried about the size. I just want to make sure, I mean, as many have pointed out, this is an enormous difference. In the size, and I believe there is, you know, i- i- in what is existing there now, along with the big setback. I mean, it looks, man, the entire. Back of our yard.
Yeah, I, I. No, I, no, I, no, I will address that for now. As was was mentioned, you know, the applicant here could build a single family home by right. That's gonna be, you know, two full stories with then some dormers, et cetera, on top. What's proposed here, it looks like a big building because you're looking at it. On, uh, on a floor plan, and it's really stretched out. And I'm, I'm, so, and I'm giving you my perspective. I'm not. At at all. Um, giving you my, my opinion here, but just a perspective. It's, it's what's what's being proposed, and granted, it's it's still, you know, but it's, I think it was four bedrooms, but, you know, since there's a master bedroom on the first floor, you know, that just always spreads building out. But then it's only, you know, a roof with. Uh, bedrooms on top, so it's like, you know, it is two stories, but the second story is really the roof already. So it's not as tall as it could be, right? But it's just, it is, it is spread out, and it it is still big. And, you know, by rights, they could build this building, but make it, make it one unit. And, um. And then they could just build it. So, you know, you got to take that bit into. Into consideration, and this, this is, these are two units, right? These are two single family homes. So. Therefore, it is by by definition a bit bigger. So, but we'll look at that closer, and we'll look at closer where the neighbors are and what their views are going to be. Uh, while we're out on site. And and and, you know, it might help the applicant if they're, you know, also for next meeting, could prepare some sort of a landscape plan that that potentially should show some screening. Um, if the, you know, if if there are any. Any views that that. Could be sort of mitigated.
Yeah, can I add to that? Um, I I agree with you, and it is important to think about what the by right option. Looks like, but I also think the fact that this is not by right and the fact that they have come to us for a special permit gives us all a good opportunity to. Carefully consider the site, and I know you agree with Antonio, so not to ignore neighbors' requests, but be able to kind of all work together with the understanding that it is. A develop a lot, develop a lot. But I definitely, we should be doing a site visit. When we can.
Right. Okay, okay.
Well, one quick one. There's one hand up and we sort of close it, but. One quick one.
Thank you very much. Ed Goggan, Laurie Foster, forty one Orchard Road, a butters. Uh, so I I am still curious why the footprint has been set back. Set in so far from the existing footprint of the house that's that's there. Granted, it's a lot larger, but it's also, it's a combination of, I think, as just reiterating what Kate had said, that it's the size. Uh, but also the setback. And why that's done, maybe to give, I would imagine, to give more driveway, to just give more privacy for the. The homes itself, but I'm just curious as to. Um, that that may contribute to the impact on the neighborhood, and that if it could start at the same start point. As the existing footprint, that may alleviate some of the concerns. Just curious.
Okay.
I can speak to that if you'd like, because we did work with the architect and the engineer on this. Because we are looking at two units, the objective is obviously to utilize this huge one acre lot and give people yard space. So in order to have each unit have some kind of a little private yard, to set the the structure back gives. Um, the people on one side, sort of the front yard by the street, and the people on the other side, the backyard. By the fence, and that's the reason that it was designed that way was just for yard space and. Et cetera, for the. You know, for that. For each of the units, and as Theo had said, you know, we don't prefer to build a single family home here, but. Um, that would be the, the down, you know, that's the alternative for us is to build a huge house, and it would have to have a. Probably a separate carriage house with an additional dwelling unit, which is all by right, but. That's not the best way to use this site, I don't think, and the house. As it stands, we could certainly look at moving it a little ways and look at some screening, and I would love to have. Um, a site visit and have the neighbors, you know. Be able to review again. What we come up with, because my husband and I have been doing this for over twenty five years, and. We don't ignore the neighbors and, you know, I thought our first pass seemed okay, but. With some of the issues that people have, we'll look to try to address them.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so, um, site visit, just so the neighbors and everybody knows, when we do a site visit. Um, that's purely informational for for the board. We will ask questions. From the applicant, but there won't be any discussion. So, as not to violate open meeting laws, so just just an FYI. Um, and and. Elizabeth Hughes, she's typically there, and she will be. Carrying a big stick and keeping us in line if we start to discuss anything, so. We will only ask questions while we're there and not to not discuss and also not go in in discussions with neighbors. Uh, about stuff, so. Next question, once we. Come up with a date, and and let's hope, I mean, it's a busy season, but let's hope, let's hope we can. We can find a date where we all can be there at the same time. That would be great. Um, question for the applicant is to stick the corners of the of the house. Uh, where you sort of like indicate that the corners of the house are going to be so that we we know. Uh, we get a better perspective. And then the question for the applicant. And, yeah, for as far as it's possible, obviously, you can't stake corner in the. In the old house, but. Uh, question for the applicant as well, if neighbors are going to be in allowed to be out on site. With the board.
We don't, we don't have a problem with that. If they want to be on site, yeah.
Thank you. Elizabeth, do you want to send out some? Some times, or do we pick something now?
It is always easier to pick something now while you're all here.
Okay. First week in January. That will give the applicants, nah, yeah. First week in January, we have the meeting, January.
Eighteen.
January eighteenth, so in the first week.
Do you want to? Do it the morning of Wednesday, January third?
I, I cannot do that day, but but don't hold back for me because I can go on my own.
Um, January the third in the morning.
I would like to be there mornings. I work in. I do work, so if there's a, any, any availability later in the afternoon, that's better.
Um, yeah, I know, let's, let's, let's.
The site visit is really for the board.
Oh, I thought you said neighbors were invited, or no?
Well, you are invited, and the board has the site visit, yes.
The board has site visit, and if if neighbors can join, then good, but it's it's a site visit for the board. Um, so January. Um, eight o'clock, Wednesday, the third.
Is Elizabeth Leonard? Oh, there you are.
Yeah, it it would be eight fifteen for me. I'm not sure if I'm required as an alternate member, but with my.
I, I, we'd like, we'd like you to be there.
Okay, then eight fifteen.
I can't do Tuesday mornings. I'd have to do it Tuesday or Thursday or later in the morning.
Do you stay the second?
I won't be here the second.
Yeah, so, so the fourth, Thursday?
I would be out for a kid doctor appointment, but that's okay.
I could only do that on a Thursday, too.
What'd you say, Elizabeth?
If if you're doing it Thursday, I'd have to be later, too. Nine, maybe.
Were you able to do it on Thurs- Thursday at nine? Is that late enough, Elizabeth Leonard?
No, I I can't do the fourth, but I could do Thursdays in general, but not that day.
I'd have to do after nine, call it nine fifteen on.
I, and I wouldn't be available till about eleven that day.
Okay, second, second week of January.
Eight fifteen on Tuesday, the ninth. That's fine with me.
Perfect.
That works for me.
Elizabeth?
Mm-hmm.
Tom?
Yes.
Eight fifteen on Tuesday, the ninth.
Hi, Dad.
That work, Tom?
Yes, it does.
Perfect, okay. I assume you'll, someone will send out some sort of reminder about that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh and then so we're then continuing this meeting to January, what was the date in January?
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth, seven o'clock?
Um. Yes. Oh, uh, no. Hang on. Heather's not here, so give me a second. Um, your agenda. Uh. Um.
Well, we have the Concord Housing Development, right?
Um. Uh what, on the eighteenth? Um no, you'll be continuing that tonight. So um yes, you could do um you could do seven on the eighteenth.
Excellent. Elizabeth or Ravi? I'd love a motion to continue this meeting.
Uh I move to continue the application of
I think we're both doing it.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah, yeah, Elizabeth, uh Elizabeth, I I think you freeze every once in a while, but uh sorry.
I'll move to continue the application of Freedom Development Corporation for a special permit under zoning by law sections four two two one and eleven six uh to the most existing dwelling and construct to new two unit dwelling at eight ninety-five Main Streets to January eighteenth at um remind me the time.
Seven P M.
Seven.
At seven P M.
Second.
Aldous in favor, Ms. Fia.
Aye.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Ego's more.
Hi.
Chair vote aye as well. Thank you.
Uh Theo.
Yeah.
Theo, is the uh is the applicant uh clear on some of the additional information that they should prepare for the hearing?
Um, I would
I I would think so. I will follow up with an email since we've already uh continued the public hearing. Um I will follow up with an email on um the specifics that
Thank, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Um.
Thank you.
Thank you and see you in uh January.
Hi.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. Um, seven twenty-five, Linda Olsen, Linda Olsen and Ken Natalie for a special permit on the zoning by law section seven one five and eleven six to construct a six hundred and sixty-three square foot two-story addition that extends ten point six feet in non- in the non-conforming front yard side setback at fifty-four Larsbrook Road. Um anybody here from the applicant to speak and?
Yes, we are both here, uh Linda Olsen and my husband Ken Natalie. My video doesn't work.
Okay.
Please excuse that.
Okay, no, not a problem, but go ahead.
We also have our architect here, Lisa Adamiak.
Can somebody um present the project to us?
I'll let Lisa take that.
Okay. Hmm, so this um project at fifty-four Larsbrook Road is um one of five Gambrels that was originally created in um West Concord um for the uh factory workers for the harness um and chair factories downtown. They were roughly built around nineteen-ten um this particular house. Um they predate zoning. Um this lot, this house is on a corner lot, it's on the um corner of um Warner Road, which is um a private way. Um so it essentially has two um front yard setbacks. Um right now, the existing front yard setback uh on the Warner roadside um cuts directly through kind of this uh the center of the house. Um so whatever we end up trying to do, um we would need a special permit for because it's just a non- it's already non-conforming. Um so you can see the dashed line um kind of going down the the left side of the house, um goes through the porch and um goes through the main body of the house. Um so that's the um front yard setback on the Warner Street side. Um, so essentially, what we are asking is there's an existing side porch um that exists um and the overhang comes out um and is ten foot six um from the uh existing property line. Um we are asking to remove that porch um and keep that ten foot six um line to create um a side entry um that it has enclosed stairs instead of um exterior stairs so that we can create a mudroom and an interior set of stairs that's safer for people to come into the house and get to the first floor level. Um so we wouldn't be, essentially, we wouldn't be encroaching on um eh exacerbating the non-conformity. Um so we would try and keep it within the same line there. And then the other part of the um the project would be an extension um on the second floor um to continue the Gambrel roof um back towards the pond. Um and that um second floor, there is some some porch um currently um that exists that we would be taking down, but we're not going any further than um currently the porch that um exists there. The new um space at the rear, um if you flip, yeah, if you flip to the other side there with the door um on the lower level, the shaded part, um we would be con- continuing the existing dormer um all the way out to towards the pond. Um so we're really just infilling um kind of the line that's that's already there on the second floor. So the second floor would not come out as far as the first floor um addition. Um so the first floor addition is just kind of three and a half feet um on the on the west side of the property so that we have enough room to have um a stair and an exterior wall. So um we're going to adjust the um eve overhang to so that we come out to the exact location of the ten foot six overhang um of the existing side porch. So we do need a special permit to um be able to come out to that same location and and continue that line of non-conformity.
Okay, thank, thank you so much. Questions from the board? No questions from the board. Um questions from the public, anybody from the public wishing to speak? Being no hands being raised.
I believe there were some letters submitted of support from the abutting neighbors. Um I'm not sure if you guys have had had a chance to read those, but um there were some support letters um also sent in.
Yeah, I uh we had those and let me uh pull them up here on uh on my other screen here. Um actually, there's
Four.
This hmm? I'm not, I'm not, I'm not seeing any, but
I don't see them.
Um anyway, um I'm closing this portion of the the hearing, the public input section. Um Board members, um any discussion um that seems very reasonable, what's being presented? The indeed, obviously, the encroachment is not um exa- exacerbated. Um so and the architectural modifications are very much in keeping with the existing house. Um so um what is it that the board fancies? Our
I agree with you, Theo. I think it's modest and appropriate and I have no
Yeah.
So
Okay.
Any motion that you wanted to make?
I'm looking at Robbie to at least nod, but uh
Yeah, I I agree. I don't think that there's a substantial detriment to the neighborhood here, uh and I'm supportive of this. So uh I'm happy to make a motion to approve the application of Linda Olsen and Ken Natalie for a special permit under zoning by law section seven one five and eleven six to construct uh six hundred and sixty-three square foot two-story addition that extends a ten point six foot non-conforming front yard side setback at fifty-four Larsbrook Road. Um I guess with standard conditions.
Yeah, I second.
Aldous in favor, Ms. Fia?
Aye.
Ms. Ego's more.
Hi.
And chair vote aye as well. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks you too. Um, seven thirty, Concord Housing Development Corporation for a special permanent site plan review on the zoning by law sections ten, eleven six and eleven eight for a five-unit planned residential development at four oh six Old Marlborough Road. This applicant has requested a continuation to our um and I don't know which, I think it's just January eighteen, right? Uh meeting.
Seven oh five now?
And that would then be seven oh five. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, so
Excuse me, are you trying to say something?
I am, sorry. Uh so the um just so the the board knows, the applicant did make a presentation to the planning board Tuesday night and um the application was continued to uh the board's January sixteenth meeting. Um it is um hopeful that issues and concerns that have been raised will be um addressed by then. Even if they are, the planning board would need to continue the application one additional time to review their uh recommendation uh and um so the the Board of Appeals can continue this, you know, out to January eighteenth. Um but it is likely you would not have the written recommendation from the planning board by that meeting.
Well, this is a seven oh five meeting, right? And we have the the previous applicant, all the the Old Marlborough, for the Main Street, uh application at seven, but still.
You think even with those extra five minutes, Elizabeth's not going to be able to get that written? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a, Elizabeth is fast, but I don't think that's
Not that fast.
No, but but but
February.
Yeah, just to go to February and that's that
Elizabeth, does that give you? Because if they're going to have to continue to their February meeting, when's their February meeting? Um, well
Uh, no, Jan-, you know, it's going to be the end of January, I think, right? January thirty.
They have a meeting January sixteenth, January thirtieth. Oh, yeah, every two weeks. Six and February twen- so it would be, they would continue it from the sixteenth to the thirtieth. So the board can continue this to the eighteenth. The applicant can give you an initial presentation. Um but you will not have the boards, the planning board's written recommendation by then, but
Yeah, so so I I I would like to have it on that. We can always continue uh in in January. Um it's just that I hate, if you know that something is going to be continued to have it as the first agenda item, because I mean, sit here pulling our thumbs till the next one comes up. Uh so I'd I'd like to continue to seven oh five, then at least we can get an initial presentation uh of this uh proposal, because something tells me that we're not going to be approving this in one evening anyways. So um I I I I think January
January eighteenth, it has to be seven oh five anyway, right? Because we already have a seven o'clock.
Correct.
Okay, would you like a motion?
Whatever would be good.
Yeah, all right. I move that we continue this um this uh, what am I trying to say, hearing for the Concord Housing Development Corporation until January eighteenth at seven oh five P M.
Second.
Aldous in favor, Ms. Ego's more?
Hi.
Ms. Fia?
Aye.
And chair vote aye as well. Um, moving on, all right, along to our uh seven o'clock uh that we open up at seven o'clock, the meeting that we paused until now. So it's a seven o'clock continuation seventy-three for a special permit on the zoning by law section four two two two, six two oh one three and eleven six for a five hundred and thirteen square foot additional dwelling unit above a proposed five hundred and seventy-six square foot garage uh which altogether exceeds the maximum floor area ratio by seven hundred and fifty-three square foot. This is at two fifty-two Commonwealth Avenue. Anybody uh for the applicant to present?
Good evening, Mr. Chair Jonathan Silverstein for the applicant, uh and my clients are um as well. Um uh I know that the board has uh already heard this presentation, but I'll just recap it briefly. Uh the proposal is for a very modest um two-car garage with a five hundred and thirteen square foot A D U above it. Uh that would all be by right, but for the fact that the combined square footage of the proposed garage and A D U puts that property slightly above the required F A R or the maximum F A R. Uh and so relief has been requested from the uh the F A R in the form of a special permit to allow uh my clients to have um two-car garage. Um currently, their cars are just parked in their driveway uh as well as a very modest one-bedroom A D U above it. Uh the proposed uh structure is going to be at the back of the lot uh behind their house. It'll be barely if at all visible from um Commonwealth Ave and uh will conform to all setbacks uh and the uh I I think it's worth noting that the A D U uh the lot and therefore the A D U will be just about uh under a third of a mile from the commuter rail station. So it's really a perfect place for uh a modest A D U like this and will help my clients um financially, perhaps in the future, with allowing a a family member to live there. So it's a a pretty straightforward proposal. Happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Um, thank, thank you. I do have a question. Um is it possible to get the site plan up, Elizabeth, please?
Yeah.
Um and and while we're waiting for that, I I've got, I've got, you know, and I'm typically I yield to the board members first, but I I just took the opportunity here. Um and there, so there is a site plan and you're, there is the, how is this? Uh, how are these garages being accessed?
So the garage will be accessed the same way that the property is currently accessed, which which is from the driveway from Commonwealth Avenue, yeah, where
And and that, and that's if 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 I read the plan correctly, that is not on the applicant's property, right?
That's correct. That's uh an existing access driveway that the property has utilized since it was constructed.
Is 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 there an easement and um on that, on that driveway?
So there's no recorded easement, but as I said, it's been used for many, many, many decades and um we do have an affidavit from the pre- former property owner whose ownership goes back to uh or family's ownership goes back to the fifties uh confirming that this has been the, uh, access for the property throughout that entire time. And it's quite clear that that's the case, because there's no other access to the site except uh, actual constructed access except through this driveway. Because even if someone were to come from the, the back past, um, the, um, the Motors, the Concord Motors site, they would still then have to turn left onto the exact same driveway before coming into the driveway that's been there for the entire, uh, existence of this house. So.
No, you could, you could, you, you could turn this garage, you know, ninety degrees clockwise, right? Then you just come off the, that, whatever it is, the, the easement or private drive that's in the rear. Um, so I, 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 so I have, I have a, I have a little bit of a, personally, and, you know, my, you know, I'm always open to, uh, being convinced otherwise by my board members. But you driving across your neighbor's property to access your garage. Um, and now you're gonna add another unit there, so there's even more vehicles there. Um, so I, I I'm not convinced I, I would like, I would like, I am, and sorry, let me start over. I'm not convinced that endorsing this plan is a good thing to do for this board. Um, you know, suggesting that it's okay to drive across your neighbor's property to get to your garage. Um, so I, I would, I would, I, I would, you know, at least an easement, if not just an outright, uh, purchase of that piece of property, that piece of real estate to, to allow this, this garage, uh, to be accessed. I mean, I, I think, I think it's, yeah. I think it's a bit presumptuous that you just can just say like, I'll drive around your property, uh, on your property, because, you know, you could drive on the other side of the house to access the garage. You know, where it says, you know, lot three. You could put your driveway there and then get, so that's, that would be, um.
Could I respond?
Hmm, yes, you can respond, yeah.
So I guess a, a couple of points. First of all, um, my point is that we have the legal right to use that driveway. Um, under Massachusetts law, if you use a driveway access like this for twenty years or more, um, then you are deemed to have the right to do so. So we have the right to do so, um, under the law. And there's nothing to say otherwise. I would also point out that Concord Foreign Motors also uses that driveway, and the neighbor on whose that property that driveway is located uses that driveway. It's an existing driveway that for many decades has always been used to access all of these properties. Um, if you wanted the applicant to cut down trees, turn the, um, garage, you know, take down trees and, and open space and pave it for the purpose of having to access via, via the driveway past Concord Foreign Motors. I don't see how that makes any sense, and it would be just digging up trees and green space for the sake of, um, changing something that's always existed, that we have, uh, for my clients have a legal right to do. Uh, and the traffic from one small, the added car traffic from one small A D U that is a third of a mile from the commuter rail, I would submit, is not gonna be noticeable in any way. Um, and, and A D U could be built by right and just keep it without the garage and just keep it under the required F A R. And no special permit would be required, but it would just mean that the current situation, which if you've seen the photographs that were submitted, means that those cars are just sitting out there instead of an attractive garage building with a modest A D U using the driveway that's always existed. Um, so I would submit that for those reasons, uh, requiring the applicant to use a less safe, less convenient, more congested access road past a busy commercial enterprise to access their house in a way they've never accessed it would not would not benefit anyone.
Thank, thank you for this explanation. Um, I'm not totally convinced, uh, by your arguments, uh, that, you know, accessing the lot from, from the rear is, is, uh, less safe than, uh, you know, coming out onto a onto a big busy road. And there, there's some other arguments, but I, I would like to, you know, I'm gonna see whether the board's okay if we, uh, defer this to, uh, town council, this question. But I, you know, if I'm the neighbor, it's like, you know, the neighbor pays property taxes on this square footage that, that everybody apparently in the neighborhood is using. And he pays taxes on, uh, on the lot. So, um, and I'm sure he would like to get a lot back, rip up the paving, and, you know, add some more green space. Um, so.
That's his driveway, Mr. Chair. That's how he accesses the lot as well, to his garage.
He, he can access it from the rear as well if he's so desired, because that's, uh, he has those rights as well. Um, so I did, I did go pay a site visit yesterday here, so I, 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 I'm, I'm aware of what's, uh, what's going on. So, um, is the board okay if we defer this to town council?
So what is your, so, all right, someone humor me as if I'm back in law school, because I don't remember. So if we're at an easement by, you're with me, Elizabeth? So if this is an easement by prescription or implication, and it's being, and its use is now being expanded, um, how, is that kind of our question here, Theo? And Elizabeth, is that your?
Um, I, I.
You're starting to agree with me as soon as I said law school and easement, so.
Yeah, it, I'm wondering, um, Mr. Silverstein, I appreciated that you said about, um, the legal right from the state of Massachusetts. And so I was wondering if that was as a constructive easement, as adverse possession? And if that could be added to the title? Do you happen to know what doctrine that, that right is sitting under?
And I would add to that, does adding the A D U now expand that easement use because of the additional heavy usage, or is it considered part of the same easement?
Yeah, it would depend.
I, I'd be happy to speak to that, and I can brief it if you'd like, but, um, you know, I guess stepping back for a moment, uh, the board isn't required to sit as the land court and adjudicate private title rights. All of that being said, yes, this would be a prescriptive easement, um, because the property has used that driveway for decades and, uh, under the doctrine of prescriptive easement. If there's uninterrupted use for twenty years without permission, which there was never permission, uh, and I have an affidavit I can submit to that effect, then the property would have the right to continue accessing it in that way. As to the question of, uh, overburdening the easement, which I think goes to your question of adding the A D U, there's case law indicating that, uh, that is possible at a certain point, but, um, there's case law stating that increasing from one unit to five units does not constitute overburdening such an easement. Um, so adding a one-bedroom A D U, which is, uh, customarily part of a single-family home use would certainly not be overburdening it.
Thanks, Theo, if I could say something. Um, obviously, we know we're not the land court. However, it's a discretionary permit, and therefore I think understanding the entire situation as well within, um, what we should do. I, I am still trying to understand, Theo, what opinion are you trying to get town council to tell you whether there's a right to use this, or whether?
Yeah, yes, yes.
I mean, as, as far as I.
And, and, and I'm, and I'm not a lawyer.
And the landowner hasn't said anything, correct? So, I mean, we haven't heard.
Uh, yes, there is a letter on file from him.
Well, saying that this, oh, oh, great, saying about the turning, but saying that this can't be used doesn't want to use it.
Uh, yeah, he wants it turned.
Um, Tom, can I, sorry, Theo, but Tom, can I ask you, as former town council, your thought on, um?
Been a long time.
I don't care, I'm gonna keep saying it. I'm gonna keep falling back on it. So, Theo, I'm not opposed, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, uh, if it's appropriate and what we're asking.
Yeah, no, and I, you know, I, I said, I'm not.
I believe the question would be, does the gentleman applicant obtain rights by prescriptive easement? I do not believe, based on what I've heard, that he would have an adverse possession claim, because he's been using it by permission. An adverse possession on twenty years applies when you, it's, uh, not by permission, but adverse use. Um, and so it may be prescribed, I don't have the details anymore in the prescription, prescriptive easement. But to me, the question, if you wish, to give it to town council would be, does, based on the history, does it, uh, therefore create a prescriptive easement?
Just one point, Mr. Chair, there has been no permission. This has been adverse under a claim of right for decades. So the affidavit I have from the private, prior property owner is that there was never any permission granted for that use. So it has been adverse.
Okay. Elizabeth?
Um, so, so as, as I sit here and, um, I'm, I'm not an attorney and, uh, don't pretend to be one. Um, because there's, sitting in front of me is now one, two, three, four, five of them. Um, I, um, and as Attorney Silverstein noted, it is, uh, not the board's jurisdiction to decide a manner of whether this property owner has, um, prescriptive easement or adverse possession. Um, but I think more appropriate, appropriately, the opinion the board should seek from town council is whether the board has the jurisdiction to move forward with granting um, a discretionary permit, uh, which you, you have not even gotten to the actual application request, which is, um, going over the floor area ratio, which, um, since I'm in the spotlight right now, I, I'm wondering why you have to go over the maximum floor area ratio to begin with, but um, the question for town council is whether this board, um, has the jurisdiction to act on a discretionary special permit um, with this, um, this outstanding issue of access, um, not being, you know, clearly defined, you know, the lots not being accessed from the public way. And, and I think that would be, um, more a direction that you might want to just seek town councils. It, it doesn't, it does not matter whether the property owner has access by, you know, prescriptive, you know, easement or adverse possession, you know, that, that really doesn't matter. It's just whether the board can move forward with acting on this special permit. You know, where the access to the lot is not through the, the public way, and, um, it is not clearly defined, um, easement.
Yeah, I, that's, that's a lot better than I could have, uh, worded it. Thank you for that. But, yeah, I don't want to get into a position, and they like, you know, where down the road, people said, like, you, you approved access through that lot. It's like, no, we didn't. Um, so um, Elizabeth, Elizabeth? I'm looking at your attorneys.
To, uh, well, Tom, Robbie, I mean, to Elizabeth, you was this point, we haven't even started discussing the, uh.
Right, 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 one, one, right, one, one item at a time. So this, this is.
Yeah, but we said there's no reason to go over the far, so then kind of it becomes a, not moot point, but, you know.
Yeah. Well, um, so let's start that discussion then, um, table this while we know what we're gonna ask potentially um, from town council. Um, but let's start the, the, the questioning on, uh, the F A R increase. And, and I know this has always been, um, we've, we've been very, very, uh, careful with approving increases on the F A, F A R. We've never ever, um, uh, approved an F A R increase that was in a separate building from the main, uh, building. And we've, you know, and we've looked at, uh, building plans and even tried to modify some building plans just to decrease the F A R increase in, in certain instances. So the question here is to, I think, uh, my question to the applicant is, you know, what's the reasoning behind? Why the increase in, uh, in F A R? Um, understand, you know, with, with the background that it's, it's it's not a special permit we grant lightly. So, Mr. Silverstein, do you wanna?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll start, and then I think my client, Tim Dre, um, may want to, uh, follow up. So the reason that, um, that this is required is that the applicant wants to have a garage for their cars. Um, and to have an A D U above it. There, it's not possible to reduce the size of the structure. So it's not, it's either they get the, um, relief or there's no, um, A D U, um, and likely no garage. It's not that they've chosen a specific design, or they've proposed a lavish A D U, you know, this A D U is below the seven hundred-square-foot trigger for a special permit. Um, as an A D U itself, uh, it's a very small five hundred and change square foot A D U above a two-car garage. And so you can't have a smaller two-car garage. Um, you really couldn't have a much smaller A D U, um. But suppose you could make it a studio and, um, and just finish less of that second floor, but I don't know that that would really do anything other than make it a less livable space for whoever's gonna be living there. So that's the reason that, uh, increase in F A R is, is being requested. Tim, did you want to add, add anything?
Uh, yes, um, I don't. Can you hear me?
I can hear, uh, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, yeah, so a, as Jonathan mentioned, um, we, we originally wanted to have an attached garage. Um, but, um, uh, that was not permitted. Um, working with Paul, uh, the building inspector, it has to be a detached garage. Um, I forget the exact reason, but he would know. Um, so it, as, um, Jonathan said, it's a, you know, fairly small, uh, two-car garage. Um, we currently have nothing there. We didn't want to have like what the previous owner had had in the past, just kind of this, almost like an inflatable temporary garage. And, uh, so we wanted to build a nice two-car garage, and, um, our thoughts were to also uh, have an A D U above it, uh, and very small. Um, so it would, you know, be in the very back of the house. Um, so that was really the motivation behind this. And because we, two years ago, we had some work done, um, so um, we had, in the whole calculations of the square footage and all, we, um, you know, because it's a five-year rule, we've, uh, you know, because of what we did two years ago, where we added about four hundred square feet to our house vertically, um, this put us over. So that's kind of the background.
All right, thank you. Um, we've been, um, that's, that's are there any question, questions from the board on this?
I have one observation. I've been thinking about it on the driveway problem. Uh, leave it up to the applicant and the attorney to think about it, but you might consider adjusting your plan to show the driveway with access, I believe, off Commonwealth Avenue, leading back to the garage. That you could then ask whether the board would approve of that. That you could then ask whether the board would approve of that. You do not, you would not be required to build it. So, as long as you think you're going to have the rights on the alleyway. Then you go ahead and that's what you do, but you may want to consider that. To get around the problem of the. Uh, prescribed deesements, adverse to uh, possess, whatever it may be. As long as you got access on that driveway, you don't care. Because you always have approval of a plan showing the driveway coming off Comm Avenue. So I just throw that up to you to think about.
Alright, thank you, um. I think.
Let's see, hey, buts. So I, I mean, I have another. Reading here which. Uh, Theo, just the one point you made, I think we did allow recently, uh, somebody to go over the F A R. Due to space over the garage being converted to an office or a couple of offices. Um, it wasn't in the main house. But, but here, we are talking about an A D U and if you look at the A D U requirements. One of the requirements is the total gross floor area of all buildings on the lot shall conform to the max FAR. Which they don't, right? And then when you look at the. Special permits that the board may grant, we can grant relief for the eighty, but if it's up to a thousand square feet. Uh, if, if it doesn't meet the setbacks. And it doesn't say anything about us being able to grant a special permit. For the max FAR condition, so I, I'm not sure we can actually give an A D U. That doesn't meet the max FAR.
Could I address that point, Mr. Chair?
I, I, I want to add someday, it's not just the max FAR to the A D U, it's also the max FAR for a garage.
Right, but, but regardless, right, like, but I think they can build the garage and stay under the. The max, right, it's just adding an A D U on top.
Well, they can also build the A D U and not build a garage.
Yeah, right, but, but, you know, they want both and I, I'm not sure I can give them the A D U, so I'm interested, yeah, if Mr. Silverstein has an interpretation. Why that, we could do that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, I, I actually noticed that as well, um, but it's interesting the wording. It says the total gross floor area of all buildings shall conform to the maximum floor area ratio as required in section six point two point one three. Six point two point one three is the provision that gives the board the ability to grant the special permit. Um. To allow more FAR, so. That clearly incorporates because. It's interesting, it could have said shall comply with the F A R as listed in section six, table three. But it doesn't, it references specifically the provision that had, that allows you to give a special permit. For floor area ratio. And I, I think that. Clearly is by design, because otherwise. It wouldn't have, it would have just re- referenced the table.
Okay, I, I mean, I, Elizabeth, if we're going to town council, I might be happier if we get him to agree with that interpretation, I mean, I see how you're reading it. Um, but I could also read it the other way. Um. Yeah, but if we have the power to really give you relief from the max FAR, then why wouldn't that also? Make you compliant with. Six to thirteen, right, that's, that's what you're saying.
Yes.
Let me, uh, while we ponder this, let me just open this up for public comment and see whether there's anybody from the public who wishes to speak here. Seeing none, and let's close the public comment section. Um. So, send this two questions to town council, um. Let me, let me, I mean, I, I. I do like, I mean, I don't, don't. I agree with all, with the plan and, and how it's come together and what, what works, but I do want to make sure. That, you know, this is a permit, as I said earlier, we do not give lightly. As we, we've tweaked architectural plans before just to. Shave off a couple of script foot, feet here and there, or try to. Um, so. There are, there is F A R in place and. That's there for a reason and I, I just, you know, going over that for the purposes of building a garage is, is. That's, that for me is a hard, a hard one to overcome. Um, but again, as always, I am open to, to. Uh, the board that uh. To convince me otherwise. Robbie, Elizabeth, Elizabeth, Thomas. Do we want to just? Table this, ask for questions, uh, ask, get our two questions answered by town council.
Mm-hmm.
Tell some time to, to honor this further.
Can we, what?
Talk about the. Six to thirteen too, right? Um.
Right, and whether, right, uh, you're right, Theo, we have, but al- although we've also as a. Kind of moved into the, if it really isn't reasonable to ask someone to squish something into a property, then we don't. Then we have granted relief from the F A R. In this case, I don't know, I'm a little torn too, because it's asking for a lot, I guess. That doesn't have to be there. Um, and there is a reasonable, is there a reasonable alternative, I guess, is the question, not unfair.
It's five hundred and seventy nine, as, as I read it, it's five hundred and seventy nine square feet over, which is, I think, much more than. What we.
No, it's, it's seven hundred and fifty three.
Sorry?
It's seven hundred and fifty three square foot.
Yeah, but I thought it's. Four hundred, uh, isn't it four hundred and fifteen square feet above? Or maybe we could just find out from the applicant, how, how far over the F A R are we going?
Um, I, I think there was like two different measurements, it was roughly. But I think it was around five hundred or so over.
No, the additional dwelling unit above the proposed garage is five hundred and seventy six square foot. Which altogether exceeds the maximum floor area ratio by seven hundred and fifty three square foot. So it's seven hundred and fifty three square foot is uh. We are exceeding.
So if it is helpful for um, the board, you have, you have not granted. Um. If, less, you know, less than half a dozen special permits to exceed. The maximum F A R, I can. Um, I can, I can pull those decisions. Um. To just give you a frame of reference, if that's helpful.
That might be helpful. I mean, yeah, go ahead, Robbie.
I, 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 I think. The amount we've allowed people to go over, we've kind of. Been able to. Look at it and say that's kind of the, not de minimis ne- necessarily, but not. It, it's not like seven hundred square feet on a.
No, I think you're right, it's, it's a really, it's an old building where they're trying to fit a bathroom that needs a little bit more space or something on a bottom floor.
Yeah, um, and you know, relative to the size of the. Buildings, it's not. That big of a. Of an increase, um, so th- this is, I think, out of scale maybe with. The exceptions that I recall seeing and that we've granted in the past and, you know, like, we can probably confirm that. If Elizabeth pulls those. Um. And then it's sort of the logic of, it, you know, no reasonable alternative, like. What are we saying, we're saying that you want both a garage and an A D U and clearly there's no reasonable alternative to make us. You, you can't fit two cars in a smaller garage and. This is not, this is sort of a modest sized A D U, so we're saying. The alternative is just don't have an A D U or don't have a garage, right?
And you're saying, Robbie, is that reasonable to ask someone not to have an A D U or have a garage, is that your line of?
Yeah, but it, but it's. You know, it, it's sort of like. Those, that's just such a large. Structure by itself versus. You know, in addition, that has to go over because. It's a, you know. It's a small lot or. It, 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 it just seems out of proportion to me, um, versus the other exceptions we've granted.
I agree, I think the F A R is a tough one for this board because we've been really given the mandate of what the town wanted, which was to put this strict. Line in the sand of how much building can be there and. It doesn't give us a lot of discretion.
Yeah, and, and, and again, you know, maybe there's, maybe we can grant the relief from the bylaw condition for an A D U that says you can't go over the max FAR, but. I think that's also just evidence that the town didn't envision. Um. A D U's as pushing people like, right, it's like if. If the alternative is you can't have any A D U, I think that's the end of the bylaw, right, because it's, we don't want A D U's putting people over the far.
Right, so this could be an unintended consequence of a bylaw that exists that we're not in a position to change.
Yeah, well, 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 I think, I, I, I don't think, maybe we could say. The intent of the town was that they don't want A D U's pushing people over the far, but we as a board can just decide, well, you can go over the far and therefore, you know, you can have an A D U, I, 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 that seems to me contrary to.
Mm-hmm.
To what that bylaw provision is, is intended to accomplish.
Well, um, Theo, I, I mean, I think pulling those decisions and asking town council would be at least giving us some more information.
Um, yep, do we, the second question for town council, can somebody rephrase that for Elizabeth, the use? Or do you have that?
Um, so I, um, I believe the um, question is. The section in the A D U that Robbie, um. You know, read dealing with the A D U. Um, and the structures on the property not going over the maximum F A R. Um. And then Attorney Silverstein referencing, uh, where specifically in the A D U bylaw. Um, it references section. Six, I believe it's six, three, thirteen, or six, two, thirteen, um, and um, in that section of the bylaw, it does allow the board to grant waivers. It's not as eloquently as I will put it to town council, but I, I will run the. Um. The request uh, through the chair. Uh, and then make that request to town council. Or the town manager for town council.
Thank you, thank you, and then you're gonna be pulling together, uh, those, the decisions. And we've granted these. So. Were you continuing this to, uh? I guess to January. What was this, eighteen, seventh, at seven, ten?
January eighteenth.
January eighteenth at seven, ten.
Sure.
Motion to that effect.
All right, I move that we continue this to January eighteenth at seven, ten P M.
A second.
Hold on, in favor. Ms. Echo's more.
Hi.
Mr. Sayah.
Hi.
Thank you, I'll see you in, uh, January.
Thanks very much, appreciate your time.
Okay, last item of the evening. Let's, hitting nine oh four here. Um. Last item of the evening is John Peters for an appeal from a decision of the building inspector zoning enforcement officer. On the zoning bylaws sections eleven point four point two. To revoke a building permit, uh, number R twenty three oh eight three six. For detached garage and office at three oh nine Garfield Road. Um. Before we get, uh, started on this. A couple of things, uh, first and foremost, we are being joined. By Christina Marshall, uh, our town council. Uh, tonight, um, and. Paul Creedon was, is also here, just if, if we need him, but um. We have Christina here, uh, to help us with this, and just to. To set this up, uh, this is a, uh, this is an application for a, uh. For a special permit that was filed in June of last year, um, and that, uh, the board. Uh, discussed and a special permit was issued on December sixteenth of last year. Um, on January ninth. Um, the, we notified the town clerk that no appeal was filed for. Uh, the special permit, so the special permit was therefore in place. In October, uh, October the tenth of this year, uh, a building permit was issued, uh, for. The construction of what, you know, with the, the special permit was issued for. And a building permit was, uh. Appealed, uh, within the court appeal period was appealed, um, November the third. Uh, when the petitioners had, uh, filed the appeal. Um, so. That said, um, I, uh, there is a lot going, um. There's been a lot of, uh, information submitted to us, even as late as this afternoon, a couple of pieces came in that, uh, that I was. Able to read, but. Um. I, uh, before I open it up to a, to the, uh, to the petitioner here and have, uh, him have his say, I just want to make sure that we're all. Uh, sort of on this, uh. On the same page, that this is a, uh, an appeal. For a building permit and that there is a lot of information out there that, that is. Maybe not, uh. Well, that's not pertinent to the app, to the appeal, or it's just plain without, beyond our jurisdiction, so. Um, we need to focus tonight on the appeal. Of a building permit. And, um, given that we have a lot of, uh, people here tonight, uh, I want to keep this ro- uh. Rather structured and if it. And I need to have only one person talk at a time and if there's any, uh. Any questions or comments that they, that they come to, uh, to the chair. And then, uh, I can, I can relay those questions and comments. That all said. Um, I will yield the floor, uh, to the applicant, uh, or his representation tonight, Mr. John Peters.
Hi, thank you. Theo, could I ask a question, could I ask a question first, Theo?
Sure.
Uh, before the applicant answers. Uh, based on my past life, uh, doing a lot of zoning work and town council, et cetera. I looked at forty eight, section seventeen. And I looked at some other sections of the, of the laws that impact zoning, et cetera. And so I would be curious if the applicant could address why. We have any jurisdiction over this matter. And why it shouldn't be dismissed, because as I read forty eight seventeen. And several cases under that. It strikes me that, both with respect. To the. Uh, appeal. And, uh, from the, on the zoning permit, as well as the appeal as it relates to the tree bylaw. I don't see where the applicant has a case. To make an argument. That we have jurisdiction at this point to hear this further, so. I, I, uh, as you as chairman, you may say, well, that may be true or not, let's lay, hear him out, but I think it'd be helpful, we just focused on. Why he thinks he has a right to be here.
Uh, sure, I, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll go there and, and if he explains that, then we can, we can, uh, take a deeper dive. Um. Um, but, uh, indeed, that let, let Mr. Peters or his, uh, his representation address that, that question.
Sure, um, the reason we're here now and that we didn't appeal this.
Oh, and, and you, you, your name and address, please, we know your applicant. Oh, and and you, you, your name and address, please, we know your applicant, but you still need to say that.
Yeah, my name is John Peters. I live at three fifteen Garfield Road.
Thank you.
I'm here and it's an agreed party in this project.
Miss, Mister Peter, I don't, I don't know if you can sit closer to your mic. I don't know if it's just me, but I'm having a real hard time hearing.
Thank you. I wa- I was looking for my volume here already, so, yeah.
Um, I'll turn everything up and talk closer, talk louder like this.
Yes, thank you.
So, we were not notified of the original application because while we're in a butter, two in a butter, we are outside the hundred and fifty foot range. Um, we believe we should have been notified because we have a right of way of that. Bisechs the property in question at three oh nine, um, this right away goes back to the nineteen fifties. We weren't, so we, we were not aware of this project until uh the middle of January. When we were notified the trees were coming down for this garage that was going in and we researched everything. We reached out to Elizabeth Hughes in the town offices. And she says our only options at that point were to appeal the building permit if and when it is issued. Under M G L chapter forty-eight, section eight. And conquered zoning bylaw, section eleven point four point two. So we are here based on that right given to us from the town law. Uh, to appeal the building permit. We believe the building permit should not have been issued because the applicant violated. Points of the special permit as it was issued. So that's why we're here.
Okay, Tom. Thomas, is that okay?
Yeah. I'm not convinced by it, but we can go ahead and have people, you know, comment as I see fit.
Okay, good.
So, so going back to when this uh permit was issued, um, and I do wanna correct one. Thing before I proceed in my uh appeal package. I attached a letter that was sent from Daniel Bailey, who is the attorney for Joyce Lawrence. One of our neighbors that was sent to Paul Creedon on January thirty-first. Um, I had it as a PDF, I thought it was a hard PDF. When I went to print it, it defaulted to the date that I printed it, which was November second, I believe, which is the day I submitted the appeal. But I do wanna correct that that letter was written on January thirty-first, not on November second. By Mister Bailey. I did include it because he made very valid points as to why. The applicant should have applied for a variance for this project as compared to a special permit. Um, our neighbors at three eleven had to apply for a variance. For a much less uh intrusive project at the time. This process, I believe, had a series of missteps and was complicated by a lot of issues. We live on a shared private driveway with four other homes. There's historic uh listings on some of the homes. The property at three oh nine was separated from three seventeen. It was the original carriage house. For the main property that was built in nineteen oh nine by Thomas Mount Shaw. Um, it's probably one of the most historic properties south of Route Two. Richard Kurt, uh Doris Kearns Goodman lived in the main house. Richard Goodman wrote a lot of the speeches. In the sixties and seventies in the actual carriage house. When it was separated off, they put historic restrictions on it. And requirements that the board of selectmen would have to approve any outbuildings on the property. The applicant went for their special permit in July. At the meeting, it was pushed back because they were told they had to go to historic and selectmen. Um, they went to both, they went to the board of selectmen. The board of selectmen had no idea why they were there, but said, fine. They then went back to to your board in November. And I mean, I'll quote uh Chairman Akers more at the time, it's like. She was, she didn't understand why you would buy a carriage house and then essentially build a whole nother buildings. Building is eighty-five percent the size of the carriage house. It gets me wrong, but if the board of selectmen approved this, then there's nothing we can do about it. So the entire process to build a garage. That sits nine feet off of our driveway, in a sense. Came down to the board of selectmen. Approving it and Henry Dane has acknowledged in email that they had no idea why they were there and had no background on this process. So, we're here to appeal. The building permit based on two points that were included in the special event permit. One was safety at point eleven point six point two. Applies to traffic flow and safety concerns, including parking and loading. They write that the project does not significantly have any safety issues, but. Nowhere was safety ever discussed. It's a private road, this garage is nine feet off the road on a blind curve coming out of our property up a hill. Um, in my appeal package, I documented. Braking distances, all standard mast D O T numbers. As to why this should have been looked at, it was never discussed at either of the two meetings that were held. Unless it was discussed, I don't believe there was a site visit, I don't believe the building committee, we've asked repeatedly Paul Creedon to look at this from a safety point of view. Engineering said that they would look at it if Paul. Said it was okay to look at it, but he's been guided by town council not to, not to have the safety looked at. Another significant part for us is. The setback, the, as we all, the town setback for garages forty feet. This garage is nine feet off a road. It's not a town road, it doesn't have a name, it's a private driveway shared by five parties. But this road is driven by us and our neighbors, it is driven by U P S drivers, uh landscapers. As such, it's only twelve feet wide. When, when the applicant at this meeting and their architect. Said that the carriage house was eight point seven feet off, quote, the road. That carried through the entire meeting and therefore justified. The existence of a garage nine feet off the road, not further affecting the, it was. It was not any more non-conforming than the original house. The original house is actually over thirty feet from the road. They provided a map from Stansky and McNary that was cut on the bottom, it was unlabeled. And the eight point seven was drawn to a line that was not labeled, it was drawn to the easement line. The easement is a forty-foot wide stretch that goes through this property. Through the next property into our house at the end of the road. It was put there in nineteen fifty-one when our house was. Had been built and they were looking to sell it for the first time and they needed to put in writing the access to our house because without the easement. We're essentially landlocked on the top of the hill. So, by, I believe by using a, an unlabeled and false map, the architect misled the board. To believing that the house was eight feet, seven inches off the road. I believe that nowhere in town would a garage located nine feet off the road on a blind curve be approved for any reason. So for these reasons, we are appealing the building permit that has been issued. And request that it be revoked and the, the project not move ahead.
Thank you, thank you for that, um. Christina, is there anything you would like to add here? Just calling on you to just make sure that you can hear us and we can hear you, but anything you would like to add?
Uh, th- thank you, um, you know, I don't. I don't have anything to add, um, I can't hear everything, um, I'm happy to answer particular questions, I'm. I'll defer to you as the chair, I don't know if you want me to uh do that before or after, you know. The property owner or anyone else has an opportunity to speak.
Okay, no, that, that's fine then, but we can hear you, you hear, so that's a good thing.
Great.
Yep.
Can I ask the applicant a question?
Go ahead.
What's the explanation for not taking an appeal? From the special permit? Either within twenty days after it was filed with the town clerk? Or if you thought there was a procedural issue. I E, you should have looked at it as a variance rather than a special permit. One could have taken, or the law requires one to take uh the appeal in ninety days. After filing with the town clerk. And I'm just curious why neither of those. Were done and how the argument for getting around. That provision of forty-eight seventeen.
Uh, yes, sir, the, the use of ninety days, this is the first time I'm hearing. We hopped on this the moment we heard about it in the middle of January. Um, when an uh handyman for a neighbor informed us that. The trees were coming down the next day for the garage and I was, I had no idea what he was talking about. I called one of my neighbors, Joyce Lawrence, I said, Joyce, do you know anything about this? She claimed to know nothing about it. There was, there are ten official abutters um for the property and they would have received a postcard in the mail. Um, bef- uh before that, just like for tonight, um. Ten days or so before the initial hearing back in July of twenty twenty-two. And as I said, we are at the end of the road, we are in a butter, two in a butter, so there's one property, uh the Marreros are the. Chris and Kelly live in three thirteen between us. They received it, Lawrence received it, Gulay at three eleven received it, or it could have been um Wade and Jill who lived there before, a bunch of people on um. Valley Road received it, um, but because we were outside of the one hundred and fifty foot range, we were not notified. But multiple lawyers I've talked to have told me. And in fact, in a, in an email from, from Henry Dane that I uh attached today. He said these people should have been notified as they are right-of-way holders through this property. If we had been notified in July, we would have been at that very first hearing and we would have uh expressed our opposition from day one. It's a horrible project, it's a historic land up here. Uh, they've already stripped out twenty or thirty trees, removed rock, it doesn't fit the character of this property as it was designed by Thomas Mount Shaw. It was, it, it completely is destroying our neighborhood, this project and um. So, yeah, that's why I did not, and if I, if. If I had been told there was a ninety-day something, we would have done it, I was told back in January. The only option for you is to appeal the, the billing permit if and when it is issued.
Thank you, thank you, um, I believe that the original special permit. Was everybody, uh, all abutters were notified as required by law. Um, so, you know, regardless what Henry Dane thinks, and it would have been nice if, if, you know, an applicant goes a bit further. But, you know, we, he or she only needs to do what the is required by law and I, I. I believe that that was done. Um, for this, um, any of the board members have any questions, um? Let me then run sort of our typical. The structure of an, of a hearing and ask whether there is anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this. Seeing, seeing none, then um. Bring it back to the board, um. I mean, we can, we can, I mean. Thomas doesn't, uh, you know, the appeal is, is necessarily valid, but, you know, I, I. I don't mind if we uh run through the arguments that the uh. That are being made, I think there's a, there's like eight or so um. Arguments that.
Oh, I do. I don't think we have the jurisdiction to look back at this for, I mean. So I do have an issue with going through all eight of these, the special permit was issued, the special permit was not appealed in a timely manner to look back at the special permit, I think. And we all know what I thought about this when it was originally granted, but I did think that this, and it's too bad the select board didn't have a clue what they were doing and that's another issue, but. I did think it had a lot to do with the historic agreement, there are a lot of would have, should have, could haves here. I was on the board when we originally carved the, this lot into two, looking back on it, was that the smartest thing to do? Probably not. But we're past that, so do we have any jurisdiction to hear these? Appeals to the special permit and town council can, can clarify this, I think we're past the appeal period. As to whether we can talk about whether the buil- building permit is valid, I mean, again, maybe town council can talk to what we should. What we can and should talk to, I think re. Litigating is the wrong word, but rehashing this whole thing again is inappropriate. I mean, there's, there are appeal times for a reason, you can't let this stuff pend forever with the idea that someone's gonna come back and appeal it. Um, so as much as I may not like it. That's where I am, happy to hear other views.
No, I, I. I, I think that's, that's correct, I mean, I, I've gone, going, I mean, I, I think we'll be coming through the same conclusion, uh going, you know. Going through all these uh, these eight comments that, that they're pretty much all, uh. It's a disguised appeal of the special permit almost, um.
I don't think, yeah.
And, and, and it's like, nope, that's, that's, that is done, so, um.
And there were plenty of other abutters who could have said something at the time as well, I think one person wrote a. And, and you know, at the time, I, I had wished that there had been more comment, but you know, it, there were a lot of people, a lot of people were notified, Joyce Lawrence knew, she didn't say anything, so.
Yeah, yeah, so that is, that's a question for the uh, for Miss Peters here, you, you are one of four abutters that uses this easement. Other, the other three abutters, were they notified for, for this? You said, you said you're on the top of the hill, so were you the only one who was not notified and the others three were?
I'm the only one, I'm outside of the hundred and fifty foot limit. So when I pulled the map of the butters for this hearing, I don't show up on that either. Because it's, you're notified if you're in a butter or in a butter, two in a butter. But if you're in a butter, two in a butter, you have to be within one hundred and fifty feet of the radius of the property. So that's why we were not notified.
Okay, so.
The house other eleven was notified, but they were, they were at your hearings in the fall. Um, so that I don't think they would have any issues because they were trying to get their own permit and they were shot down on their variance.
So, so that this goes to Elizabeth's point, right, there were other people, other neighbors were notified of this, right? Uh, you, using this same easement, uh Elizabeth Hughes.
Um, I would just like to um clarify the requirement that the planning division um. Holds to is a butters to a butters within three hundred feet.
Brandon, sorry. Okay.
I just wanna make sure that that's clear.
But just to clarify, I'm not here to appeal the building permit, I mean, the um special permit, I'm well aware. Of the rules and that, I'm here to appeal, appeal the building permit for this law. Because the building permit was based on certain conditions of the special permit that were not met. For example, at the hearing, um, I'll quote Jim Smith. He said that, given the fact that the garage is no closer to that road. Than the house is to the road. The house is thirty feet from the road, the house is eight feet from the easement line. Um, he says, I think I'd be comfortable with finding that it doesn't increase the nonconformity. But I think I just want to put the road condition in there, the road condition has been violated. They were, the board was misled that when the architect said. And, and we can pull up the map, it's on page eight of the reply I put in today with the measurements. It was a map from Stansky and McNary. The two lines that were drawn that were to label the easement were cut off on the bottom.
And, and this, this, this would have been a, a great item to appeal. The special permit on, if, if you disagreed with that, but the uh, the special permit was not appealed. And, and that's what I just said, it feels like your uh billing permit. Uh, appeal here is sort of a disguise, disguise, um, special permit appeal and.
I said, I said, I'm not appealing the special permit and nothing here is, I'm appealing building permit. To build a garage that is unsafe and violates the conditions put on it by the special permit. The, 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 the applicant has already built a stone wall over ten feet into the easement. That's their acknowledgement that they believe they own that land, if they own that land, then they should have said, the setback should have been measured from that. Not from the line.
So, so, uh, you know, the, again, the stone wall is out of, out of our jurisdiction and I don't know who owns this land, right? The easement is, is. Somebody owns it, um, and they might, well, own it and you have an easement, you know, I have the same condition here, my neighbors cross over my driveway to get to their house, they've got an easement. Um, so, but I own it, uh, and I pay taxes on it, but, and that's fine. Um, so I, I hear you there. But, um, anyway, Thomas, you were, were getting ready to say something.
Just one comment, I, I, my sympathy lies with the petitioner, the, in this case, what he's saying, I think. Factually, he may be correct on some of the points, although. He may be correct on some of the points, although having said that, I looked at it pretty carefully. I'm not sure I would. Agree with him that I might, pardon me, still come out on the side we did when it was approved. However, I think uh there is uh. You can't use a building permit appeal to challenge a special permit. And there's case law now, one, I think it's called Gallivan or Galley, uh Gallivan, I'm almost sure. It's an appeals court case. Um which addresses that point. And so notwithstanding that, I feel badly uh indeed that. Some of the points that are being made factually may be correct. But notwithstanding that, those facts were the ones upon which. The building commissioner, I assume, issued the permit. And therefore. To appeal the building permit based on those facts, I don't believe can be done here.
Hey, I agree, I agree.
Yeah, I, I also, I, I don't think, I, I kind of object to your, that, the comment that it's like a hidden attempt. Because I think I would have done the same thing if I had found out about it, would be do whatever I could to appeal it. So uh my sympathies also lie with the petitioner. I just also agree with Tom. I don't think we have any jurisdiction. Unfortunately.
So who has jurisdiction to overturn a building permit that was issued under false pretenses and, and is to build a property that is? Completely unsafe. No one has ever looked at the safety of this project. I outlined in my appeal very clearly, you come up the road, the, the applicant has to. To get out of their garage, th- they only have nine feet. They have to back across the road into their driveway. To then pull forward to the right to go down the hill. It's not physically possible to make that turn the way it's designed into a twelve-foot road. Uh we even proposed widening the road to the easement. Um and the attorney for them shot that down and says it's been abandoned, which has not been the case. Um our solution is to make the road wider so we can safely pass this garage, which we will do if this proceeds.
Again, I feel, sorry, Mr. Chairman, can I comment for a moment?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Again, I feel badly here, kind of being, being maybe the bad guy, as from the applicant's perspective. However. At that hearing. If anyone had either raised the issue or the applicant then had said anything about traffic. And maybe they did, maybe they didn't. I don't, to be honest with you, I don't remember those details. But. All we would have had to do is consider, we didn't have to rule based on traffic. It was pure. You can consider it or not under the zoning bylaw. So again, I'm not quarreling with his facts. But that information should have been presented at the hearing or. On the basis of an appeal timely made, which wasn't done.
Right.
Present the facts of the hearing because we didn't know about the hearing. The applicant at the time would not have presented facts. That would have been detrimental to the chances of their project. And there in effect was no hearing because the board said if the board of selectmen approved this, there's nothing we can do about it. At what point in time has the board of selectmen made decisions on, on special permits? In this case, it was strictly left at.
Because this was a specific restriction, that this property was subject to a specific select board restriction and. Um i- it was completely, it's a, a unique situation where the select board did have control over what they were trying to do when they were entered into this, into this agreement. For us to say this is what we thought the select board wanted, they didn't want a garage, they didn't want another house. It was not our place. I mean, it was their place to say it. The fact that they're not paying attention, shame on them. I think that what you're asking, which is a valid point, it is, who can you go to to say this was wrong, that, that something, some law or something is being broken? And I think the problem here, as Tom said, is that this is a discretionary permit and even if the facts that you're stating. Are facts maybe, but they're not breaking the law. If we, we could have granted this and we did grant this permit and we could have decided that that turning radius is whatever it is. There's nothing now that you can say this applicant is breaking the law. If you said to me. I, I mean, maybe not to our board, but uh it, it, they're not breaking the law at this point. This was a discretionary permit that was granted. Unless Paul tells me that they are breaking some condition in their building permit, but. It's a terrible situation. I agree with you. Which I know gets you nowhere, but.
Yeah, my claim is the, the selectman was not intended to replace your board in deciding on a project. It was an additional hurdle that was added to keep an eye on the stored property. If the applicant had wanted to build a five-story garage or build a garage that went over the road, I'm sure you would have said no. Um it's not up to the selectmen to decide what's, what is legitimate in terms of a variance or a special permit or what's safe or what's not safe.
Well, in this case, it was appropriate for the select board to talk about whether they approved of this specific project, not a hypothetical five-story project. And then it went back to the, to our board and we had very lively discussion about this then and the board came to the conclusion that this was, this project was okay. So I understand the frustration again, unless I'm told by someone else, I don't see any jurisdiction to overturn the building permit or the special permit. Definitely not a special permit, but.
And just, just add to that, Elizabeth, I also think that our jurisdiction, when the, that, that came, when it came before us, was relatively narrow. Right? There was just, you know, uh pretty much a uh, the non-conformity, the eight point nine uh, whatever you voted on.
Yeah.
Does anyone know what the eight point seven, where that goes to? Like, is it, it doesn't, this isn't a traditional home that's on a, on a road?
And, and, and I think that made it a bit, because I, I don't think there are any setbacks.
That it draws true to the easement.
So, so I, I honestly think there are no setbacks here. There is no front setback. Uh because it's, it's from an easement and, you know, for me, setbacks are from property lines. When the subdivision control law has come into place and has set up. Uh. A private, either a private way or a public way, and that's a right of way. And then you have a, a front setback from that. A setback from an easement. Um subdivision uh control law does not come into place. The town doesn't come into play most of the time. And, you know, anybody can put an easement on a land and then doesn't mean that then all of a sudden is, is, is a site or a front or a rear yard setback. So it's, that's, that was always a little bit um. Um mystery to me why uh there was a, there was a really, a, a question on, on whether there's an encroachment at all. So, but it was the application, so we voted on that. Um and, and as I, as I said, it's. Yeah, it's, it, it doesn't really necessarily uh. Um. It, it doesn't necessarily uh change, change your uh. Your, your appeal here. But I, I also think that, you know, if there is. Um and I, I don't know the lay the land per se, but I, I know that, that easement is wa- uh pretty wide. The road is pretty close to the garage, whether the. You know, the, the road can be relayed a little bit so that it's further away from the garage. As you said, widen it. I don't think necessarily widen. Might not be necessary, but indeed make, make the curve a little bit uh. Wider, if you will, further away from the garage. I think that, that, that could alleviate a lot, but that's, that's just, you know. A request that I think, you know, you and, and, and uh your neighbors uh need to uh, need to address. Um so.
I think you decided before the meeting tonight, so it, I don't know why I waited here for an hour and a half or wasted hundreds of hours.
Uh we, we might have decided. I mean, I, I think everybody uh on this board has reviewed, as I said, when he, when we started this, there's a lot of uh material that was out there. And I think everybody on this board has uh reviewed them very carefully. And I think, you know, we always come prepared to these meetings. And, and, and we pretty much, I think, everybody for themselves knows what they uh, what they, uh, where they're gonna vote that night. And, you know. One can be persuaded, but I think, you know, I come prepared to these meetings and, you know, I, I know where I stand. And I think this was, yeah.
No, that's fine. I was.
It's just like I'm, I, I'm with Tom. I mean, I, I think, I think there is a lot. Uh, you know, I feel somewhat sympathetic with you and, and I think there is some solutions that uh, that can be had. But I don't think that those solutions will, uh, will run through this board. So. Um.
All right, I'll, if, if someone gets hurt on this curve by a car, I'm gonna hold the town responsible, so I want to put that on record.
It's, it's.
UPS trucks drive around that corner. Um it's incredibly dangerous and nowhere in town would, would a garage like this been allowed to have built on a curve. I, I know the debate that went on when they put the cutaway down by our mailboxes for the conservation land. And it was borderline with the two or three hundred foot sightline coming into it. This has about a sixty-foot sightline before you come around that curve. And right into a car backing out of the garage across the road into their own driveway. It's for an applicant that doesn't even live here. He lives in Boston. We live here. Our kids go to school here. South Ken lives in Boston. It's a, it's a. Guest house for his clients to be able to stay in out here. It's, it's completely ridiculous that this was ever approved. And I can tell you two neighbors that are moving because of it. Um so, including us.
Uh, thank you. Um is there um? If Christina, if you don't have anything to add, I'm gonna just. Um looking at my board for a motion, I think, I think we've gotten to that point.
Yes, um thank you. I, I don't have anything to add. I am in agreement with um the board members who have. Kind of said that they, they don't think there's jurisdiction here. Um I agree with that. Um perhaps unfortunately in this situation, but I just think the time for the appeal has, has long passed. So, thank you.
It has not passed. The time for the special permit appeal has long passed. The time for the building appeal was filed within the thirty days allowable. This was the hearing that was picked. We've never passed, we're appealing the building permit, not the special permit. We're appealing the building permit for safety issues. You're building a garage that's nine feet off a road that is, should not be allowable. It is not safe.
Yep, and, and there's, there's case law in this area that, that says that, you know, in that exact situation, um, you know, the appeal needs to have been brought for. The special permit in the first instance, um and not for the building permit. Um there's case law that says that even if um. It's, you know, more or less proved that a board did something wrong the first time around. If you miss that appeals period, um there's, there's no jurisdiction, so.
Well, then you should remove this from the Concord Town laws, so it's not an option. To, to tell people that this is their outcome, this is their path forward and they do all the work. And then you're gonna say, well, that was shouldn't have, you shouldn't have even been here. Um what is the point? Everything Elizabeth Hughes has sent me over the last nine months is appeal the building permit. And then you can just discuss the issues of safety and setback at that point. I'm not appealing the special permit.
And um Elizabeth, um no, no Christina, I'm so used to seeing Elizabeth because that covers my bases. Um Christina, um we would do like your help, I think, uh if you would be so kind to help with the. Uh the writing of a decision on this, uh this matter.
Certainly.
Once, once we make uh, like we can do a vote here.
Yes, of course. We're happy to do that.
Thank you, thank you. Hmm. Elizabeth Echoes Moore, are you frozen on your screen or? I think she is.
I think she's frozen.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Um.
And she might not know it. So I'm looking for uh. A motion.
Um.
Somebody to second motion.
She just texted me, um, I can hear you.
Okay, okay, okay. Good, but we can't hear her, so can you call in?
Call, she's going to call in.
Okay, okay, okay. Wait a minute then.
While we're waiting, Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Um it, listening to Mr. Peters, certainly we've all expressed that we have a sense of sympathy. Um for the, the facts of the situation. Can we offer him any next steps or other areas in the town that we would recommend he talk to? We certainly all have a lot of um expertise in the different areas that have been. You know, been referenced. I'd hate for him to leave this feeling um. You know, as if we, we don't want to give him other avenues or, or any guidance we can offer on, on next steps he might look at.
Um I'm not sure whether there is, is in town any, any next steps, but I think uh. He needs, you know, I, I, I think he needs. Maybe different legal representation and, and I think, you know, the, I think the steps are uh with his na- with his neighbors uh that.
They would engage counsel.
That he agrees by and, and there's apparently three other uh households. Uh that, that access that same property and, and I think, you know, a discussion. Uh whether it's a discussion or mediation between them, I think, would be the, the next logical step.
So Elizabeth um is phoned in now. Back.
Hey, good, good, good. Oh, we could still see you. Now you're gone there too.
I was like being at home. I could hear everything. I just couldn't get through to you. Here I am.
Okay, so um I um, I am actually kind of looking for a motion here. Um. Um if, if we're ready for that, or if we want to discuss it any further, I didn't think you were necessarily. In favor of going, uh running through all the eight points. Um but um I think if we've done, done that, we'd spend some time, but come to the same conclusion is my, uh, my guess. So um I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'm happy to make a motion. You know, I think without running through the eight points, you know, generally, I, I think. We're, we're looking for any grounds that we might have to. Um. Set aside the building, rescind the building permit and looking at the grounds presented by the applicant. Uh, you know, they are either. Uh questioning the validity of the special permit, which as we've discussed. Is not timely, so um while that may have been a discussion, we would have had. Some sympathy for, uh had it been timely, we, we, we don't have the jurisdiction to go there now, so we cannot use those as grounds to. Rescind the building permit. Um, you know, I think in terms of a couple of the other points that were cited around the tree bylaw or potential defects in the select board's process. Again, I think the remedy for that is, uh would be whatever the tree bylaw says is a remedy for the violation or, you know, to. Um. Uh, you know, I, I don't think we can go on undo a select board action. Um. Uh and rescinding a building permit certainly doesn't cure anything that was wrong there, so. Uh I think not seeing those, any grounds here to rescind the permit, the building permit, uh and make a motion uh that we denied the appeal.
I second.
All is in favor, Ms. Fia.
Hi.
Ms. Echoes Moore.
Hi.
And Chair votes aye as well. Thank you. And Christina, thank you for being here and uh thank you for helping us uh with the uh, the decision.
Yes, of course. Thank you. Nice to see you all.
Well, that's uh one of the longer hearings I've been, been a part of uh at the. Nine, almost nine fifty here, so. Anyway, there we go. Um Paul, thanks for being here. What was greatly appreciated tonight.
The first time a, a perma-lation was appealed, so it was, it was an experience for me as well.
Yep, so.
How about that? You really messed up. Geez.
So, thank you.
I hope you feel bad, Paul. All right, we'll see you all later.
Uh yeah, all have a happy holidays and uh see you all in the new year. On a side visit, nice and cold. Take care, y'all.
Bye.
Bye.